We're not people, we're the city side. We are happy, I'm just... We're taking turns. Right. Walking through, she said this could be the only space left with enough pleasant something to get. No, I think it's me here.
No, no. The whole point is to get them there.
All right, I call this work session to the Compaq City Council to order. This is a work session, we're going to be dealing with budget issues this evening. But first, we have time for any council comments or announcements. Are there any council comments or announcements? All right, seeing none, are there any public comments? Any public comments? All right, we will move on to the first item on our budget work session, which is a discussion of the Communications Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Thank you. Let's see, my budget is roughly the same as it's been forever, with the personnel increases that are endemic to the city budget. A small increase for postage, increase in the newsletter. And that's about it. As you know well, there are also capital equipment line items. And we've budgeted that we're hoping to spend $100,000 of our money in the next fiscal year on a variety of digital upgrades that are projects that we've been trying to get to. But we need some new cameras and some new non-linear editors. As you know, we haven't purchased a lot, or you may know, we haven't purchased a lot of new equipment in the last few years because of the construction. It wasn't a good time to introduce new electronics into a dusty environment. So we're slowly putting together some new things. The money is coming from the capital equipment grant that is grants that are come to us through the three cable television franchises.
Where does that show up in the budget?
It's under special revenue.
Yes. Yes, it is.
Didn't mean that to have a question mark, I mean, it's in special revenue.
Is there anything else? I mean, we've got the list of accomplishments and you certainly are to be congratulated for the awards and also for getting the city's website up and running.
Thank you.
I found the streaming video to be useful on occasion. And from the numbers, it looks like... Well, actually, that's TV number, hours numbers. But it, from what you've told us before, it looks like it's pretty well-used.
The Granicus application has, is in the middle of a rewrite of their report function. And so the data, there really are no data that are available right now because they've just reopened it up and they're expecting by the end of the calendar year to have more and better data, including comparative data where you can see that at 7:30, three people are watching live, and at 10 o'clock, when you're talking about Hot Topic A, there are 47 people watching, et cetera. And it's kind of interesting, they've shown me some of their graphs that they're working towards, but they're having a major rewrite of the software. But I look forward to getting those data to see, you know, we know anecdotally, all of us, that people are using Granicus, clearly they're using it. But it would be nice to see some numbers. The one thing I wanted to point out to you in this chart here, just about the website, which will include Granicus users but doesn't separately identify them, is that the first timeframe is a five-month period with 40, close to 4,400 unique visitors. The second is a six-month period with 5,000 unique visitors. The very last column is less than three months and it's over 5,000. So clearly, we've doubled the number of people who are using the site on a regular basis. You know, we're hope, we're working with the departments to make sure that we've got timely information and both the sort of evergreen information about departments. But we're using the front page as a headline service to try to make sure everything that's happening this week or next week is updated and anytime there's a fresh report that's been issued. And we've purchased the software in the last two months to put an RSS feed on there, which is those little orange buttons that you sometimes see. And it will send you an announcement at your browser whenever we change that page. And we're just working out how we're going to do that internally and make sure that it's, looks intelligent. We're experimenting with RSS and learning about it ourselves. But we've got the software in place so that we can readily do that. But that's what, that's our headline news page, is the front page to comparqmd.gov. So we're excited about that possibility. Because a lot of people are using that function rather than having to go visit a number of different websites of places you might be interested in every single day. We, you get notified from that website that there's been a change on a particular topic. So I think it's nice technology.
Terry Lindberg?
Thank you, Mayor Porter, and I apologize for being late tonight. I stopped on my way here, stopped by the Impact Silver Spring Community Empowerment Program graduation ceremonies. And I had quite a crowd of people there, but I got away just a little too late to make it on time. And I apologize to you, Ms. Moppet, for, it's not that you're not important, you certainly are. I did want to take a second and thank you for the, some of the things that Mayor Porter just mentioned, you know, the snapshot show is just excellent all the time. Glad to see you occasionally get recognized with awards. The website is such an improvement over where we were, and I appreciate that, because you've gotten that under control now. And glad to see our newsletters still in process, even though we had a change over in not just the editor but also the publisher.
Graphic designer and printer.
Yeah.
It has a new look, which we're quite pleased with, I hope you take note. And the picture quality seems to be better, and we're very pleased with the new providers. Not that we were displeased with the previous ones, but the new ones are turning out to be very good.
I have one question maybe you can answer that's unrelated, but kind of related. It's about Comcast, and they cut back on a few channels today on the basic service, much to the chagrin of many of the residents of my ward. Most particularly, I guess, they cut back the, cut off the court TV from the basic service. And I wondered if there's any way we can find out from Comcast what's going on and if there's some way, especially for the Franklin Apartments, that is subsidized housing, if there's some way that they can continue to receive those channels. People who live at that address, you know, don't have a lot of resources for other entertainment. And the cutbacks today were sorely missed, so.
I'll be happy to look into it for you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks for clarifying the chart, because I found it a little confusing because of the inclusion of the word "average" in the label. So maybe for the final version, if we can get that out of there, people will know that it means the unique visits rather than average visits.
Well, it is, it is a mathematical average. Because what I did was some, the number of visitors, the number of unique visitors, because it'll range from, you know, 2,000 in one day to 8,000 on another day, or whatever, you know. And so I came up with, I mean, I did a mathematical average for that timeframe.
So, but you said that the, the two six-month periods.
Well, one is five months, second one is six months, and the third one is three months. Because we, because February 1st was the beginning of the new website.
Right.
And when the software was available. So that's why that timeframe was odd, was a five-month period.
Okay, but.
The second one was.
But if it's an average number of visitors, it's an average per?
What unit of time?
Oh, I beg your pardon, per day, yeah.
Oh, well, that's not clear.
I will refine the chart for the final version.
And then.
Now you're making me question what I know. I will definitely go back and look at it and make it clear for all of us.
I took your earlier comment to mean that that was the total number of visits during that period.
Let me go back to date and get a better number, make sure that it's.
Okay. And then I just wanted to check on, every once in a while, there's a question about whether the various entities provide access to our cable channel in all areas of the city. And I just wanted to get an update and see whether there are any areas that aren't getting our channel.
No, no one has specifically called me to identify that they are not able to get Comcast Montgomery in their, in their neighborhood. I know that that's been discussed in this forum before, and I've asked for anyone who has that issue, because I can call Comcast with a specific street address and look into it. But I have never received any specific inquiries, so I haven't been able to do that. My understanding from Comcast is that Comcast Montgomery certainly claims to be carrying, being, claims to be available to every household in the city. RCN is, should be available to every household in the city. Verizon is not yet providing service in the city.
Right, okay.
But I think the issue is that if people are still on the old Prince George's, what was it, Jones communication, that they're not getting it.
That they can't get this channel.
Yeah, is that the case?
That is correct.
But that's only if they're subscribing to that, because they can still subscribe to it.
Yes, and there are about 120, I think it is, households that still subscribe to that. We get a franchise fee payment quarterly of about $500 for those people that are still wedded to Comcast Prince George's.
Okay, okay, that, that might provide the answer for the question when it comes up. It could be that that's the issue.
Yeah, it could be that they are on that system and they need to call Comcast and get switched over to the Montgomery system.
Okay, thank you.
And please, don't hesitate to have anyone call me so that we can, you know, I can walk them through the process, I can do the, help them do the exchange if they'd like. You know, I'm more than happy to assist. I want everyone to have access to our channel.
Any other questions? Well, I guess that's it, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I appreciate a continued good job. And I assume that one of your, your big tasks in this coming year will be working on whatever comes out of this feasibility study on this auditorium.
That's correct, it certainly will be. So I hope there is a project to, you know, I hope we're able to go forward.
At the very least, maybe we should upgrade the audio, because people keep saying that they can't hear things, so. I believe that.
Just as a side note and for your listeners, I have identified with RCN that the audio that they're sending is a little bit lower than the audio that Comcast is sending to subscribers. There's some odd thing, so they're looking into why that could be.
Okay.
So that may be a problem with, for some of the Star Power subscribers.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. We are now moving on to the Police Department.
Mayor, before we get started, I could just make some opening comments, since this is one of the larger city budgets. The proposed budget is approximately $360,000 higher than the FY07 budget. And that's essentially all captured in personnel costs. As the council, I think, is aware, but for members of the community who may be watching, the last two years, we did not fund all commissioned police officer positions in the budget. The department at those, that time was significantly understaffed. And so the council had asked that we basically bring the salary line items more in line with what we actually thought would happen in FY06 and FY07. The proposed budget that is before the council this evening does fully fund all 41 commissioned or uniform positions in the department. I think one of the things Chief Rukucci is going to talk about is kind of where he's at in staffing. The other thing I did just want to mention is that the proposed budget does reflect the addition of a crime analyst. And the mayor had alerted me that maybe there was some confusion about some of the terminology in the budget document that I had given the council and just wanted to clarify that. In the current year budget, there is $75,000 allocated in the Police Department budget for cross-jurisdictional cooperation initiatives. And that is basically captured in a contractual line item. The terminology that was used in the, in the budget document talks about that money being allocated towards the hiring of a crime analyst. And just so I'm clear, we did not anticipate the expenditure of any of those FY07 funds as far as projections, mainly because we hadn't moved to that point. There were a lot of difficulties in working through the district process with a different fiscal year. What I meant by saying that the funding would be allocated towards the hiring of a crime analyst was for '08. So in other words, I presume that that $75,000 would still remain in the Police Department budget, that it would be used for hiring a staff person. So it essentially would move from a contractual line item to a personnel line item. So I know the mayor had just said that that was a little bit confusing in terms of the FY07 reference, and that's what we were doing. So with that, I guess I'd like to turn it over to the chief, who I think has a few issues he'd like to share with the council.
Before you do, you just confused me.
Okay. If that was not the intent, council member Williams, or we'll take another one.
I thought I understood, now I'm confused. The $75,000 in the '07 budget.
Correct.
If not expended, would go into the carryover.
It does not automatically go into the carryover. For purposes of projections, we assumed a very minimal amount of funding was spent. So anything that was left would essentially go back to the fund balance.
Right.
Unless there's a specific decision to carry it over till next year.
Okay, but what you're, what you were saying was that that $75,000 is still kind of in the budget, but where it, where it goes to changes, but it's.
Correct.
But it, but it's not that the '07 money became something else for '08?
I'll take another shot, now I think you confused me. We're off to a great start this evening. The $75,000 in the FY07 budget is in a contractual line item in the chief's office. And obviously, there was, part of which we'll be talking about later this evening is that exact issue. For purposes of projections, we only assumed a very minimal amount of that money would be expended. I think as the council is aware, we had reimbursed Safe Tacoma Incorporated for some expenses that organization incurred prior to receiving any funding from the district. I guess the way I view it is, there's still $75,000 in the budget for FY08, for cross-jurisdictional purposes. As defined in my proposed budget, that would be used to hire a crime analyst. So essentially, it moves to a different place in the budget.
Right.
Is that as clear as mud now? Okay. Okay.
Good evening. It's with a great deal of pleasure that I, the first thing I want to announce tonight is that the Tacoma Park Police Department is at full strength for all sworn officers and for all full-time positions. And it's my goal to keep us at that. It took us, from my perspective, we've hired four on my watch, but I want to compliment Paula Gaskins, our Police Officer of the Year, and Captain Corsi, who was our acting chief, who got the ball rolling. And I was able to keep it rolling. And tonight, we're full strength, we have two, we've got all the officers, officers are made, and most of them are on board already, are scheduled, two of them are scheduled, are laterals. So they'll be on the street hopefully by July 1st and, or near the end of July, two recruits will start school. So we're at full strength there. We're also at full strength in our communications section. We have now appointed a supervisor, and I feel very confident that it'll improve our customer service in that area, which I know has been a concern to the council. But we're at full strength, and our goal is to keep us at full strength and to continue recruiting and having a list that we can currently hire from, which we do have in place. So that has taken place. The budget that.
Yes.
The budget that you have before you tonight was obviously my first budget, and we had to put it together within the first month, so after going through. You got my email.
Chief did ask for clarification, which council must pledge to take.
Someone mentioned a cake, and I just happened to mention in email that there'd be a nice announcement tonight that we deserve, the type of cake that we like. Thank you, council.
Chief, I would just like to make one point that, you know, refresh people's memory that I had promised you a cake when we reached full strength. But I know your email today said that, that you were looking for a German chocolate cake. And I just want you to know that this council doesn't always give you exactly what you asked for. You got an American chocolate cake.
I can do with that.
It's my preference, Councilman DeSimmons, so thank you.
Thank you. This being my first budget, really the only new item that's in here, other than we did personnel costs, as Barb has told you, is the crime analyst. And just to go back a little bit over what the crime analyst can do, in my first couple of months, part of my job was to meet with our fellow police chiefs and commanders on both sides. And we've developed a very good relationship with Commander Davis and PG Hilton-Burton in DC, and Tom Major and his staff. We've become really close and working very closely together. The new police district commander in Silver Spring is an officer that worked for me at Wheaton when I left 12 years ago, and he's now captain, and we've already met and talked. So I look forward to having an excellent working relationship with him. But the number one thing that has been brought to my attention by our fellow jurisdictions and really pointed out candidly is the lack of crime data coming from Tacoma Park. A crime analyst would be able to provide us with this. Crime analyst would be able to give us tactical event database, field interview database, traffic database, uniform crime reports, criminal justice system reports, miscellaneous databases, evaluate activity in a particular area, identify possible suspects based on similar incidents, put out individuals in particular areas and vehicles as a result of our FI contacts on the street, identify events for closure after suspects been identified, obtain maps of incidents for community and grand jury presentation, link charts for cases, and basically crime analysis by each ward and by the whole city, which obviously would assist you all in going to meetings. Montgomery County started a crime analysis section when I was still a part of that department. Today, it has grown to 13 people. Silver Spring has a full-time analyst, as does each district, and then they have several analysts at headquarters. One analyst will be able to communicate with Prince George's County, with DC, Montgomery County, Silver Spring, and it will give us an opportunity to share data, along with the commitment that you've already made to the record management system. This will be another tool to take that data, put it to use, and let our citizens understand at all times what crime is and what's occurring. One of the things that I've learned in talking to our community, sometimes perception versus reality is not always the same. And I think we're working very hard to get that information out through community meetings and through press releases. One of the things we've learned is that our citizens want information and constantly want to be kept updated. And I have understood that probably better than anything that I've learned over the first four months. And I think we're doing a fairly good job at doing that. I think the crime analysis section, where the crime analyst will be able to provide even more up-to-date information at all times, giving our citizens an opportunity to contact our crime analyst when they have questions for data, which will help them to understand what is really occurring in their neighborhoods, not what they might hear on the rumor mill or what they think may have occurred, which is, obviously, we try to get the best information out as possible. I think the program will pay for itself in community satisfaction. I think it's a positive and it's an addition. They'll help us be a partner, a partner that now can share data with both Prince George's County, Montgomery County, Washington DC, and the Metro Police. During the next year, we will be reviewing, as we've been doing for you all, all facets of the department. Obviously, in the first four months, between the robberies and a few other things that have come up, we've put our, all our resources and time into meeting the community and hearing the community out, and obviously dealing with the robberies, and then obviously the hiring has been a priority, which we've done, I have to admit, a lot faster than I expected when I got here. But we, I feel pleased that we are at full strength and have people on our list that are ready to come on board. So if a vacancy occurred, we'd be in good shape at this point. During the next year, some of the programs that I hope to initiate, which cost-wise will be something we'll be looking at, is Citizens Academy, Youth Academy, a Community Advisory Board. The legal explanation on that is, we have so many different neighborhood groups, and I spend so much time talking to each group, I want to try to bring them together in one room and try to get everybody to come to a consensus of what's going on with data and share data with them on a monthly basis. We're also looking at a Youth Advisory Board, which is something that has worked very successfully in other jurisdictions that I've been in before. We hope to plan in the fall this year, an Open House Police Activities Day, to get other departments to participate with us and open our house up and have the community in. And I think it's important in developing that partnership. We see this budget right now, I can see next year me coming, just to prepare you, we're going to look at it and be able to try to justify the things we're doing. But I can see some programs maybe we may cut back on, and other programs we will increase. But with us being at full strength for the first time, that does increase our costs. We haven't had the cost of equipment, training, things that will go on during the year, overtime, court costs. So some of our costs are going to go up, and we're going to be watching them very carefully. The other good thing is, being at full strength gives us the ability to manage our personnel in a way that should cut down on overtime and some of the other expenses that we have incurred over the last few years. We tried to go back and try to figure out how long it's been since we've been at full strength. Captain Corsi researched it. I went to first, our deputy city manager, he thought it was three years. We went back as far as five, so it must go back even further than that. But, so we're looking at a different Police Department date. Along with full complement of sworn officers, we have full complement of communication clerks. And I think you all know, that's been a big problem in this department. That's going to make a difference in overtime. So we will look at our budget very closely this year and our expenses. Operating at full strength, which we hope to continue to do all year, could affect what we may say to you next year, but we will keep you informed as the year goes on and what we see. Secondly, and I'd like to thank you for your support over the first four months. It's been an interesting four months, it's, I can't believe it's been four months already, but it has been. But I think we're off to a good start. I appreciate the support of the council, the support of the people behind me, the department has been fantastic. But the biggest thing is the community is starting to buy into some of the things we're doing. And that makes me feel good, because that's what it's all about. They're our customers, we want to serve them and be in partnership with them. Thank you.
Well, Chief, I wanted to thank you for the work that you've done so far. As you probably know, most of us, I think we've mentioned this before, most of us have heard overwhelmingly good things about people's contacts with you. And I've heard very positive things about the visibility of the officers and about your personal efforts to get out and meet with people. All of those things, I think, are very good. I am inclined to support the addition of the crime analyst. And the folks in the department can probably tell you, I'm not an easy sell on additional people, but.
I was told that, ma'am.
But in, I guess for two reasons. One is that I think you make a good case for it, and you're exactly right that information going out to the community is one of the real big issues that they've had in some past years with the Police Department. And if you, if you will promise that this will increase the volume of information going out to the community, I would be, I would be in support of that. I think the other reason that I would support it is that you've been here just four months, but you've already increased the visibility in a very positive way of the department to such an extent that I'm willing to give you, you know, a chance to show what you can do with an additional person. So for all of those reasons, I am supportive of the additional crime analyst. Although, there's always a but on this, isn't there? I was noticing in the table, and I don't know if the, maybe Wayne can mention this, I, I, you've got an increase in your overall FTEs of 1.25. I understand what the 1 is, what's the 0.25?
I believe it's hours for crossing cars.
No, I can, if you recall that during the current fiscal year. It is the victim's assistance. It is the Victims Assistance Coordinator. I had touched base with the council after Ms. Dean had left. Thankfully, she was willing to come back, but we wanted to, she had asked for an adjustment in her hours, and I had touched base with the council at that time.
So that's the--
That's the additional 0.25.
That additional quarter person is hours for the victim witness assistance. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. Ruben, who always gets done to ask what he can first.
Oh, yes.[626.29][626.29](laughing).
Maybe no one else will say what I have to say. Well, anyway. I have just a couple of things I want to reiterate. You and I talked and had a great conversation early on, and seems like you're mostly doing the things I suggested. I don't know whether it's as a result of talking to me. I will take credit for it. And in any case, one of the--
Well, you're happy. I'm happy.
I am happy, actually. Couple of things. One, I really appreciate your, I'll call it youth emphasis, prevention emphasis. I really think it's important to get to know the people, especially kids. You know, when a kid is eight or 10 or 12 and they get to know the local police officer, then when they're a mouthy 14-year-old, it's not a strange guy coming up to them saying, "Look, you know, tone it down," or "fly right," or whatever. So I think the two things, one is getting to know the kids, and second, I think it's helpful to look into some training for the officers dealing with youth. I've had some experience watching really well-trained police deal with youth, particularly teenagers, and it really makes a big difference. Teenagers are not adults. The second thing I really appreciate is your increase in information and communication with the public. I have heard essentially nothing but good comments about it. Those folks who have said, you know, gee, I didn't realize that much was going on in Tacoma Park, actually, when I have talked to them anyway, said, "I'd rather know than not know." So I think you really have a good strategy on that, and going out and meeting folks. I mean, you're a good person to do that. You interact well with people. They understand where you're coming from. They like to hear you, what your plans are and so on, so I think that's going really well. The last thing I want to say is I think the first few months here, it's hard to believe it's four, (laugh) have shown something else, too, which is that your efforts have, at least in my observation, essentially improved the morale of the police force. I think it's had an impact on the force, the fact that you're on two sides. One, you're out in the public, you're coming to the council, you're arguing forcefully for what you see as the things to do, and you're also supporting your staff, and they see that and know that, and I think it really, I think it really does make a difference. People work harder when they're working for somebody who has a vision and somebody who supports them. So I think I'm really pleased.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have.
Anything else? Sure.
Couple of things. I really commend you for getting so quickly up to full strength, and that is something that we've struggled with for all the years that I've been a council member, and I can't believe that's six now. The other thing that you have done, even though it was starting to get better before you came, is the focus on communications and getting the word out within very quick timeframe has been very reassuring to me as a council member. I have to say, having the information sooner rather than later, finding it out from you rather than my residents, has gone a long way to inspiring my confidence in the operation that you are, you know, putting in place, and I hope you will continue that. I know you can't continue meeting with groups and people at the same rate that you have been, but I do very much appreciate how much you have done in these four short months to reach out to the community, and it's been noticed, it's been appreciated, and I think you've started to change people's minds about whether our police department is able to serve this community in the best possible way and in a way that really fits our unique qualities. So thank you for all that. There's no but to my statement. I'm actually convinced that the crime analyst is an important addition. I think that we have seen many city staff members stretched very thin, especially in administration, the public gets thrown their way, and, you know, with the amount that the city budget is growing, with the amount that city services are growing, I do think that every so often it is important to add that additional staff member so that we're not continuing to burn out the people who are trying so hard to serve us. So the crime analyst sounds great. I will save most of my remarks until the safety coma discussion. I am very interested in still seeing that initiative go forward, and we can talk about that at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Mayor Porter.
Thank you, Chief, for causing me to have to buy you a cake.[970.13][970.13](laughing). I appreciate the opportunity.
I like a challenge, Councilman.
My memory says that it's probably more than five years, too, since we've been at full strength, so I really appreciate it. I think the officers have to be happy, too, that they are getting the assistance that they need out there on the streets. They've had a long, difficult time with being short-staffed, and I think they did an excellent job filling in all those long hours and extra time and going out on the streets. Sometimes I felt facing dangers they shouldn't be put in because of the short-staffed, and so I thank you for getting us to full strength and Captain Corsi for your help in that, but I also thank all the members of the department for the hard work that they put in to carry us through that difficult time. I won't repeat everything that's said about the appreciation of the leadership that you've brought to this department. I think that what I have seen over the years is that we've had a lot of good, dedicated, hard-working law enforcement officers, and I see the youth come in here and really taken that and molded it very quickly into the beginnings of a very strong team, and I give you the credit for that, and I really appreciate that. It really excites me to see that. I think that when we're sitting here at the table next year, we're going to be talking about the best police department in Montgomery County, because I really see that's the direction where you're taking this place.
That's my goal.
Okay, so the honeymoon's over. No.[1091.26][1091.26](laughing). I just want to talk about the crime analyst for a minute. Again, I appreciate the information getting out to the community, the way that you've done that with the staff that you have now. I'm not interested in spending a whole lot of money to increase information to the community, but I see a crime analyst's primary function as being to organize the information and be able to identify trends and patterns and be used as a predictive tool for crime investigations and crime prevention. And I'd just like to make sure that we're on the same track there, if you want my support.
Oh, definitely. I mean, obviously, I bring up the community because I think you, I don't have to tell you all how much information our residents want, and I mean, I've learned that early on. I knew that coming in. What I'm looking for is being able to share the data, more importantly, with the officers and being able to look at trends. But the biggest thing is sharing data with our brothers and sisters on all the borders. That's going to make a big difference. They haven't had our data before. What we're going to find, I believe, is some of the crimes that are occurring, when you look at the patterns and you share the data, it leads to arrests. I mean, it's happening every day in, you know, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and in metropolitan DC where crime analysts exchange information, and when you exchange it, it leads to something else. It may be an, something that has minor thing here, a person we picked up or talked to, but when you share that data, somebody else knew about him and had him in a robbery or somebody else saw him somewhere else. We're looking at, I mean, obviously, I think the selling point to our citizens is more information. From a standpoint, it's an operational thing, will make us more effective, make us a better partner, which is one of the things that was one of my goals coming here, to work better with the fellow jurisdictions. And, you know, as I said in the first time I came before, that's the one thing I heard from every jurisdiction. So it's going to make us much better in what we do. I think we'll close more cases, make more arrests, be more effective, and I think we will help our other jurisdictions a lot better, too.
As you must know, one of my biggest desires is for better communications and cooperation with our neighboring jurisdictions, and as I have the confidence in you and your leadership of the department, if that's what you're telling me to take, you've got the reins, I'm certainly willing to support it. Thank you.
Well, to follow up on what you said, just so you know, we are now part of the Montgomery County Gang Task Force, which is working with us right here in Tacoma Park. We do that two and a half days a week. That's been a big improvement. I mean, we're doing some things before we weren't doing. The Street Crimes Unit is now on the street. I pointed out to you before, Crossroads is a priority area for us, New Hampshire Avenue. We've been on New Hampshire Avenue since the Street Crimes Unit started last week, for two weeks. So far, there has not been any street crimes. We had a stabbing, obviously, where we made an apprehension, but we've been paying, obviously, particular attention to everything on the New Hampshire corridor, especially our recreation center, and it is paying off already by having our Street Crimes Unit out there. The other thing I would add to you, that some of the things we've put in place, and it's from the men and women that sit behind me have been able to do through the first three months of this year, believe it or not, with everything that's going on, actually, Part I offenses are down 10%. So some of the things that have been going on, that Ed had started, and I've been able to continue and strengthen with our Street Crimes Unit and some of the other things we're doing, has showed some results. Now, it's early in the year, and I'm not going to take credit for this yet. I'll wait till the end of the year, and then we'll come back, but we're concentrating on the area. The area right now is the New Hampshire corridor, and by just having the Street Crimes Unit out there this week, it has made a difference. We haven't had any crimes where we were averaging at least one to two street robberies a week, and the 10 days they've been out there, there hasn't been a crime in that area. So it's working.
There are a list of things that we could go down of positive signs from the police department. Smiles on the faces, I think, is one of the things that just, you know, makes me feel good and makes the community, I think, feel good. You know, glad to see we've got the technical unit again. A lot of things, I appreciate it. I thank you and--
Thank you.
--like to give you the support.
I wonder if I could just, if you could give me a moment, if I could just follow up a little bit on the last item that you mentioned, because I, Councilmember Barry continues to be out of town, but if he were here, I'm sure he would want to follow up on some of the issues that have been happening along New Hampshire Avenue. It seems to me that there had been, and I appreciate what you said about the last 10 days, but it seems to me that there had been an increase in some very violent daytime robberies happening in, you know, well-populated locations at bus stops with a number of people standing around, and this is a kind of crime that I don't, I mean, we've had muggings on the street, but not in cases where someone was stabbed in front of dozens of people standing around. And I'd sort of like to get your assessment of sort of where this is coming from and what you think we should be doing and what you are doing to sort of deal with this on a long-term basis, because it seems to me one of the most troubling trends that we have seen in a long time. It particularly seems a concern to me, since I sat on the Bye County Anti-Gang Task Force some years ago, and they talked about the Langley Park area being an area of growing gang activity, and I don't know how much of this is gang-related, but it certainly seems like it could be, and it, since a lot of this is outside of our jurisdiction, a lot of it may be out of our direct control unless we're working very closely with the surrounding jurisdictions. So I know, I wonder if you could maybe elaborate on, and sort of from a wider perspective, what you think is going on, where it's coming from, what sort of the long-term trends are.
One of the things, one of the first things, I think it was the first week I was here, Chief Major in Montgomery County had a press conference to talk about robberies, and he talked about robberies where there was four more people robbing one victim, and it was gang-related, gangs. So that's been in the back of my mind, and we started looking at some of the robberies that are occurring in the Tacoma Park. The two robberies we, I think we've had on my watch, we believe, were robberies from the District of Columbia or Prince George's County, who I believe now, in spite of our good work, I believe were caught somewhere else, and we just haven't been able to identify them, although we're continually talking with the jurisdiction. Right now, the robberies we've seen on the New Hampshire Avenue corridor was groups of people, and what we found is young teenagers in some cases, which fits into the gang thing. One of the first things I did was meeting with Chief Major, asked for an opportunity to work with the Special Investigations Division, which I was involved in for 12, actually 13 years, and they have the gang unit there, and we had several meetings, and I saw an opportunity for us to participate with them, to get more information shared, plus they would come and work with us down here, because this is considered a target area. We work very closely with Prince George's County and DC's gang unit. So what we have now is we're part of at least three different gang units coming together, looking at what's happening on the New Hampshire corridor. The stabbing and the assault, the stabbing, there's no doubt in our minds it was gang-related, was a member of the Bloods that was stabbed, and another group that we've identified over in the New Hampshire area corridor. The assault that occurred Saturday night, we believe, was a group that most likely was gang-related, that possibly came out of DC. One of the things we're seeing now is young people on the New Hampshire corridor utilizing that corridor, and then when we follow them, when they haven't done anything wrong, but we've watched them, they head back to the metro station and head back into DC. So we're watching that very closely, because obviously we have concerns, and I know you all have had concerns in the past, about the metro station and what's going on there. So we're watching both those areas very closely right now and seeing some of the trends. Being a part of the gang unit, Mayor, gives us an opportunity to have all the resources of Montgomery County, which is about 15 officers who are working with us. We're committed to helping them, and they're committed to helping us. We're unlike the borderline of where all the intelligence is coming in. We've probably identified eight gangs, I don't want to get into specifics, but eight gangs operating in this Crossroads area down here in Tacoma Park, and we're going to continue to identify them and work, if they're committing crimes, to do what's necessary to take them off the street. It's a bigger problem than I anticipated when I first came here and talking to the officers, but we've seen it grow. As you put heat on it in other areas, it's starting to push it towards us, and that's probably part of our problem right now. But with some of the things we're doing with the Street Crimes Unit, with the Gang Unit, I think we've got a good, we've got a good handle on at this point. I think we're seeing with our presence in certain areas already made a difference in crime not occurring, and we will continue to do that.
This may be something that we might, you know, ask you to come back for periodic updates on it. I think it's a fairly serious problem, and I appreciate what you're saying and encourage you to keep a focus on that.
Well, what I've spoken with, what we hope to do during the year is to bring you updates on crime and trends and to keep you all, so you all know what's going at all times. Like I said, we're going to be looking at our resources and how we're using them, and I think it's the best way to explain it, is to tell you what's going on and how I'm utilizing them during the year. So I guess that's our intention, to do that.
Appreciate it. Please.
I just want to say that in many of the comments that my colleagues have said, I'm in exactly the same place. I really appreciate a lot of what's been going on and the effort that you've put in since you've been here and the results that we've seen so far, and I like the proactive approach toward things, and I know that from your past experience here, from your contacts, your ability to coordinate, communicate with other agencies in this area is really going to take us a long way toward where we've needed to be and where we should be. Aside from all the other things everybody else has talked about, I just wanted to talk for a minute about trend in resources that the department foresees, and I'm looking at the capital budget and looking at patrol cars, and I see the amounts increasing at least out through FY 11, so I wanted to get a quick sense from you about where we are with patrol cars and kind of what we still, as we've instituted that program for take-home cars, where we are, whether we still, you know, like whether we still got, say, I don't know, 10 more that we need to do, or, you know, where we are in that process.
I'm going to let Captain Corsi, because he started this program, and should get a lot of credit for implementing what you all gave. We are started, but we have a ways to go, and I'll let Ed give him that.
I think we've laid out into the equipment replacements or portion of the budget, our needs over the coming years, and if it doesn't change it, we're going to need to add officers. We should be fine with that plan of acquiring the car. Wayne Hoss and I worked on that pretty extensively.
It includes--
It includes both new and replacement vehicles.
Right. But what I'm wondering is, where in that are we, like, how many do we have now? How many do we need? So what's that gap that we've still got to come up with?
Well, I think we have budgeted to put in-
Five new ones this year.
For each of the next couple of years.
So we're like maybe 15 away from having what we need?
Well, actually, we had all we needed this year until we went into our hiring push.
Right.
You found some extra money.
No, no, I'm just wondering where we are.
Our original plan was to have it fully implemented within three years. We did, in fact, implement it in one year, and we'll be able, with the five cars, to stay on track with that. So I think we'll be okay with that.
So it's, so what's coming in the, out years in the capital line for the patrol cars is replacements or releasing rather than-
You're going to see that adding numbers.
Oh, I know, I know it's going to be there, but I wasn't sure where we were in terms of, you know, getting up to full speed and implementing that program.
Well, you've got to figure, when, I think you started the program, you were down 10 officers, which we've now filled in the last, since Ed took over and I took over. Between the two of us, we've filled 10 slots. So you're going to look at more cars, because there's got more officers as soon as they get through their training. So over the next year, we should be fine, because it takes so long for training to complete before they'd be eligible for a car.
Right.
So right now, the way it's been laid out by Wayne and Ed, I think we're on the right path, and we should be there probably-
I'd say within two years.
Two years.
I think the five cars this year, probably is going to be about three or four car increase in the size of the fleet. And then each of the next years, it's less cars added on and more cars being replaced, because some of the cars that we're using today are a little bit past their prime, is about the best way to describe it. The five car per year plan over the next couple of years is going to take care of that.
Okay. How about bicycles?
Bicycles, we have ordered the uniforms, the officers are trained, and I believe we have initiative with Prince George's County down the Crossroads in two weeks, so I hope to have them outfitted and ready to go. But by June 1st, we should have them all on the street, which would be 10 officers. And you'll see more of them.
We need more bikes.
We want to get them on the street first and see how they do with the five bikes, how they take care of them, go from there. But more bikes is something down the road we'll be looking at, but there has been some good grants in that area, so we'll continue to look at grants to get more.
So at the moment, we're operating with hopefully more bicycle patrol officers than there are bicycles?
Yes, but that works out with the way the shifts are on days off.
Right, right.
We have six bikes currently, one on order, and as the chief says, the different days off for the officers, there wouldn't be all six or 10 officers working at the same time.
Do they get a take-home bike?
Not at this point, but it would, to be honest, we'd be a goal down the road with a take-home car, to have a take-home bike, and that is a goal of ours. But right now, we want, I want to get them on the road, get them visible, and get some feedback on how they're doing out there.
Just on the bikes, can I follow up? One thing, I would encourage you to implement this with the June 1st date, because I don't know if this is what accounts for the 3.5 hours in calendar year 2006, but people have joked about how the Bike Patrol is in the parade, but not the rest of the year. So I think June 1st is great, because you can hopefully get coverage before the parade a month later.
I can make a promise to you, they'll be on the street before the parade.
But the parade is all downhill.
Not the first one. Ruben?
A quick feedback on the Bike Patrol. Comments from people in my ward were really intriguing to me, because they said, you know, there's this stereotype of the donut-eating police officer, and, you know, I was saying, well, you know, we have the Bike Patrol, and this person said, yeah, it makes the police look fit when they see them on the bikes, rather than in a car, you know, they should be out walking, this kind of, they see them on the, and it changes the impression that people have of the police when they see them riding around on a bike, because, you know, people think of bike riders as fit, so it just carries over. It's a little extra respect for you guys.
The training they got and what they had to go through to be certified, and the ones that had had it before, and we had to recertify them, you have to be in shape. Most of them are suffering the whole week because of how much we require them. But one of our, one of my themes to my staff has been, we want officers getting out of the car, walking, talking, and smiling, and it's starting to pay off. We're getting more and more hours as we get more and more people on the street. But, I mean, I have heard what the community has to say, and I've heard what you have to say. I said, walk, talk, and smile, it's very easy, it doesn't hurt.
You might have to catch your breath first, though, when you're awarding. You have some killer heels.
Other additional, yeah, go ahead.
One is, I didn't want to leave out Officers Corsi and Gaskin in commending you for getting up to full strength. I really do appreciate all the work that's gone into this from you and others to get us up to full strength, and it is quite an accomplishment. I hope you'll put out a press release about that.
It's ready to go, ma'am, it's already typed up, it goes out, you got to hold.
Very good, because we can really use that in informing our residents about something that's been a long time coming. The other thing I wanted to tell you is I was talking with someone who works for the county council, Linda McMillan, and she commended the city for hiring you. Now, how about that? I didn't have anything to do really with hiring you, that would go to Barb, but she commended me for being associated with the city that would hire you, so I thought that was a good sign. One thing that you mentioned with customer service in communications, I think that's an excellent direction that you're moving in, and I know that we talked about this previously. I would just hope that if we are the ones delivering the high-quality communications, then we should also be the ones getting funding from the county for that. I really do feel that if we are providing the full service, police work, and then all of the additional things we do to stay in touch with our cross-jurisdictional neighbors, we really do deserve that rebate, and, you know, seven positions, I believe, is what you have in communications. It's a, it's a big chunk of change. So I hope that as you negotiate that rebate over, what, the next-
This year.
This year, so that we can come out on top on that. I really would look forward to that. The heavy patrol that you've been doing in the metro area, I hope that will continue. The traffic stops, looks like you're definitely continuing to keep that as a priority. And I don't know where drug enforcement and car crime activities are. I know that car crime has been something we've really seen an increase in.
There's been a spike in auto theft, but actually, we've had some good, I know over the last month, we've made at least three arrests with auto theft. We've recovered several vehicles. The officers at McMillan, actually, we chased a vehicle two weeks ago, where we spotted a stolen car, and there was a short pursuit, but we retrieved the car, and actually, the officer was able to identify the suspect who went into PG County, and we've gotten arrest warrant for him. We're doing a lot more on that, because we're very conscious of the cars that are taken. Unfortunately, sometimes the public knows their car got stolen, and there's, you see that reported, it's not usually reported when we make an arrest for it or recover the car. But our recovery rate has been fairly good so far this year, but it is a main cut. Drug enforcement will continue. Part of the street crimes, we'll be looking for drug enforcement, but we're looking for dealers, and we're trying to get the dealers, we're looking at crack cocaine and some of the other drugs that are being used out there. I've had several comments, and I think Bruce should ask me about it. We're not looking for the casual user, we're looking for dealers, we're looking for drugs that will lead to crimes on the street. We're not going into personal yards and things like that. We're looking for crime that's related to drugs, and drugs do tie into crime, so that we're going to continue to, and we're doing that right now. A lot of our traffic stops lead to the seizure of drugs. We watch deals go down, and we then stop the person, so we're working on that and we'll continue to do that.
Okay. And you think car crime will be something that we can expect to see, you know, more recovery? Is that, is that a focused effort right now? Because I, you know, you can't focus on everything all at once.
Well, obviously, you know, when you talk about recovering stolen laws, it's very important, just like when we have burglaries or thefts, recovering stolen property is important. We are now part of a council governments initiative involving all the pawn data being in a database that we can retrieve. We've paid to become a part of that, and we've done that. Ed started, and we formalized our membership and are part of that, and that's very active, gives our investigative section an opportunity to look at people, where they're pawned. They don't just pawn in Montgomery or PG, they go all over. So we are recovering property and will continue to do so. Sometimes that doesn't get the publicity of some of the other stuff we do, but, you know, we are recovering property, and that's one of our goals, doing closing crime, is recovering the property that was stolen, if possible.
But does that, it doesn't go on the crime blotter that comes out? I know arrests do, but when I read through that, I can't say I read-
We don't normally put recovered property on there. I mean, if it was a major thing, generally, we just put arrest. If that's something you're interested in, we could start looking at that closer and putting it on the blotter.
How do people feel about that? I mean, arrests are certainly reassuring to see on the blotter. Maybe I'm compulsive, but I read the blotter all the way through every time I get it.
I think the main thing is that you be sure to toot your own horn whenever possible.
I don't think I've ever been accused of not tooting my own horn if you talk to people.
Sorry to interrupt your discretion on what you think is-
Well, that's part of the reason. Sometimes we don't release certain things, because we don't want the information to get out, we have recovered stuff. I mean, we do look at a lot of stuff, if we're working a case, a lot of times, and we've made an arrest, you may not find out about it for two or three months, because we may have flipped somebody, and we're going to the next person up the food chain, so to speak. But we'll give you as much information. We're going to, based on what I know, the more we can give you, I know that makes the community happy and it makes you all happy, and we will give it to you, believe it.
Okay. And car crime has been one of those things that people are continuing to, you know, feel nervous about, like, it happens, close to, you know, a-
And I would remind you, one of the biggest problems we have is our citizens need to lock their cars, they need to take their property in, don't leave bags out when you're in a shopping center or when you get home, put them in the trunk. We open ourselves up, if you look at most of, as we do, and that's one of the things we'll start doing even closer, what causes some of these crimes? You'll find that cars are unlocked, windows are down. I'll give you an example, I went to a community meeting last week, actually, you saw us walking, and one of the neighbors was talking to me about a burglary, and I said, well, did you have your windows locked, doors locked? Well, no, I left my back door open, I always have. I mean, I realize, well, when I was growing up, and I won't say how many years ago, maybe you left your doors open, but today, unfortunately, I don't care if it's a good neighborhood, you need to lock your doors. You don't give a criminal opportunity, and they look for the opportunity. You could have somebody going door-to-door delivering something, and they see a door or window open, they may take the opportunity to do something they wouldn't ordinarily do. We give people the opportunities many times to commit crime. Not to say that a lot of crime doesn't occur regardless of the opportunity, but leaving doors open, cars are the big thing. Lock your cars, put your windows up, don't leave your iPod, don't leave your computer on the front seat, not even for five minutes, because people are watching, unfortunately.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. You know, the idea that we are now at full strength, I think is, really is a cause for celebration, that's why I offered the cake. And since we're getting ready to go on break, I think we should all celebrate, and I have a second cake, so that we can have some cake and celebrate that.
Appreciate that. I wonder if I could just mention before we finish, a couple more things. You have, just so you don't think that everything's all love and joy and we don't, we're not going to put any demands on you for the coming year, actually, it's probably the more you do, the more we're going to ask you to do, which I'm sure you, I'm sure you realize. You've mentioned several times that you think dispatch is one of the most important things to work on, and I would agree with you. And I certainly hope in the coming year that we will eliminate some of the problems that we've had. You know, even if you guys are doing a wonderful job, if somebody calls dispatch and gets wrong information or a sort of abrupt interaction, they will say, boy, we must have a lousy police department. And so I would encourage you to follow through on some of those things that you've already talked about in terms of training and things for dispatch. Joy mentioned the traffic stops, and I would second that, you know. I'm sort of, I've been sort of the traffic enforcement irritant on the council for a number of years, and I intend to continue to do that. The other thing, the department has participated in a number of pedestrian safety efforts, and I commend you for doing that and hope you'll continue to do that. One of the things that the council governments is talking about doing is instead of doing a once-a-year traffic pedestrian safety media effort that would be coordinated with enforcement efforts, to do it twice a year, the second one being in November when the time changes. I think that would be a great idea, and I hope that if they go to that, that we can continue to coordinate our enforcement efforts with whatever times that they continue to do that. So I also commend you on the pedestrian safety stings that you've done. Anything else?
Just to see, Mayor, we're part of the chief's challenge program right now, and based on the statistics that have been given to me by our supervisors, and we've challenged the officers and we hope to reward them, we've had the best participation in the department, apparently, in many, many years, according to the captain, who's been, obviously, for a while. So we're real pleased, but the officers are responding, we're challenging them, but we're also rewarding them for the challenge. And I think Monday, we are going to a awards dinner for one of our officers to get to go with, because he's the highest producer in this area. But we're going to continue to do that, we're going to be doing a nighttime challenge, which I believe COG announced on television last night, and we will be a part of that also.
Okay, good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Earlier this year, the chief had come before the council asking for continued support for C-Safe. I think as the council's aware, up until our ability to use CDBG funds, which is the only amount the city has contributed for that program, basically came to an end because of those program requirements. The chief had come to the council asking for $15,000 towards C-Safe. I think we indicated at that time we would be approaching Montgomery County, and basically what's in our budget currently was speculative on our part in terms of what Montgomery County might do. I think the chief has some news about that that he might want to share.
Well, Linda McMillan had some other terms to use me now that I'm back, but we went before the council, and I guess you could call it Old Home Week, but it worked very well. Phil Andrews, who I originally hired in Montgomery County, who's now our Public Safety Chairman, hadn't forgotten me, and believe it or not, even a few council people that, who haven't been so favorable to us recently, did remember me and the program, which they're all familiar with, and our former council members who I've just met, who used to serve up here, were very supportive, and we were told today, got, we're late this afternoon, we've gotten the $30,000 from Montgomery County. They supported us, and we're real pleased with that. A lot of people worked on that, and I appreciate the support we got.
Well, that's great. As we talked about earlier, that's a really important program, in a good area, for something like that. Is there anything else? Well, thank you, Chief, and thank you to the rest of you in the department, we really appreciate the work that you've done. Thank you. The council will take a short break and come back a little bit early. I'm glad to see some of the folks from the safety Tacoma group here, because we'll probably start a little earlier than we're scheduled.
Hey, where are you?
I'm going to ask the city manager to start off by introducing this item and then we'll give you a chance to chime in with anything you'd like to bring to the discussion.
Okay. What I'd like to do is maybe just provide some background for anybody who's watching in the audience who maybe isn't familiar with this issue. And simply just try to lay out, I think, some of the legal parameters that I think the city council just needs to keep in mind. As we talked about earlier this evening, there is $75,000 in the current fiscal year budget for a cross-jurisdictional crime prevention initiative along the border between the city and the District of Columbia. The city's commitment of funds at that time when the council put our funds in the budget was predicated on an equal contribution from the District of Columbia. And I think one of the things that's been a little bit of a complicating factor is the fiscal years between the two jurisdictions are different. Our year, council's aware, starts July 1st. The district's fiscal year begins on October 1st. There are interested residents from both the city and the district are in the process of forming a nonprofit entity known as Safe Tacoma Incorporated. And I think some of the officers of that organization are here this evening. Mr. Grimes was before the council Monday evening, he's the president. He was unfortunately out of town, I believe, this evening. Faith Wheeler from the District of Columbia is the vice president. Is that correct, Faith?
Correct.
Sarah Green is the secretary, who is also a district resident. Probably should be noted that both Ms. Wheeler and Ms. Green are both AMC commissioners as well. And Andy Kellerman, who's the chair of our Public Safety Committee, is the treasurer. As I understand it, you all can correct me if I'm wrong, you are still in the process of obtaining your nonprofit status from the IRS. And because Safe Tacoma Incorporated did not have its nonprofit IRS status, you are not really in a position to be the recipient of the District of Columbia funds. It's my understanding that the grant agreement, well, actually, not my understanding, the grant agreement between the district and the Metropolitan Police Department was actually executed with the Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association, which is a DC nonprofit organization, and I believe it was formerly Planned Tacoma? Is that correct? The grant agreement, which I did include in the agenda packet for the council, provided for the release of 60% or $45,000 of the grant award, which I believe that check has already been cut and released to the Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association. As part of that agreement, there was a requirement that a work plan be submitted within 48 hours of execution of the agreement. And Mr. Grimes had provided me with a copy of that work plan, and that is also included in the agenda packet for the council's information. The remaining 40% of the funds, according to the agreement, were to be released contingent upon successful completion of certain tasks. The grant agreement, I did highlight some of that in the council agenda packet, set forth certain goals. The district's requirement is that the remaining 40% would be released sometime after July 15th but before August 31st. And as I understand it, they wanted sort of a progress report to see what was being done and to ensure that they were satisfied that those goals were being met. To date, obviously, there's been a lot of back and forth from the city's perspective. The council had given me the authorization to reimburse Safe Tacoma Incorporated for some certain expenses. They were very minimal, I think it was about $370. Andy's the treasurer.
$380.
Huh?
$380.
Okay. I went off something that I'd received from your president. He said $370. I went with it. And the remaining funds are basically, you know, still in the city's budget and have not been expended. As I mentioned earlier, at this juncture, based on when I was preparing my proposed budget, we didn't really know where things were going. I think the staff had increased it slightly less than $400 figure, but the rest of it was presumed to be unexpended just because at that point there didn't appear to be any movement forward. I wanted to touch a little bit in terms of what Maryland law requires. Under Maryland laws, municipalities can appropriate public funds for any public purpose. And as is often the case, what is a public purpose is not defined in the law. There's a lot of court cases about what that's going to be, but certainly it's going to be things such as domestic violence programs, arts programs, and certainly public safety programs. We obviously provide a significant portion of our budget dedicated to our police department. A local government can also essentially provide a grant to a nonprofit organization if the council deems that those services are either best provided or can be provided by another entity outside the actual governmental structure. When you do that, I think this is part of the discussion between Safe Tacoma Incorporated, certainly in the District of Columbia, because they operate under a similar standard under their laws. You have to make sure, and this actually is the responsibility ultimately of the city council, that there is adequate supervision and control over those funds. And basically, the law, according to our city attorney's office, requires total accountability by the private entity for the public funds. So any type of agreement that the city would enter into has to provide some type of reporting mechanism back to the city, just as we have to do as a grant recipient from federal, state, and county agencies. In your agenda packet, I tried to just kind of cut and paste from the information I had been given by Mr. Grimes. And it basically is an excerpt from the agreement between the Metropolitan Police Department and the Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association. And you'll find that on the rear side of the blue agenda packet. Basically, it outlines, I think it's about eight different goals that were set forth in terms of how those funds would be used. I know we've had some back and forth over the email in terms of, that the goals are fairly broad, that there's not really, from my perspective, a very specific work plan. And I do understand that part of the challenge has been, for those of you who are sitting at the table and others who are involved, is you were trying to figure out what type of work plan to put together when you weren't sure about the timing of funds. And certainly, my sense is that you were trying to get a lot of community input in terms of what would be necessary. In my opinion, just in looking through those, and I would just share this with the council for what it's worth, there's a couple of those points that, from my perspective at least, probably fall more into the realm of the police agencies themselves. And those would certainly be some of what we talked about tonight under the police department budget. In terms of the compilation of crime statistics, my understanding is a lot of that data is only going to be available to a law enforcement agency anyway. Obviously, Chief Rakuchi has made his pitch for a crime analyst, which appeared to be supported by the council, and the MPD obviously has their own crime analysis division. So that's just from a practical standpoint, not a criticism or saying that that information is not important. I'm just not sure an outside group is the best one to do that because the statistics are going to have to come from the police anyway. I think certainly some sense of maybe what information the community is wanting and, you know, what's the best way to get the word out would certainly be helpful to the two agencies. The other area that I noted, at least from my perspective once again, where the police probably have the primary role, was, as it was characterized in the agreement, was helping law enforcement professionals in both jurisdictions gain an improved familiarity with the entire area and what's happening there. Once again, I think certainly some input, but a lot of times, what I have noticed is residents may pick on a specific instance and not really see the full picture. And I think that Chief Rakuchi and his staff, and I certainly have the utmost confidence in Commander Burton and his staff, probably do have a pretty good sense of what's going on. So from my perspective, those two goals probably were more better suited for a police department. In terms of the rest of the goals, ultimately, it's a decision of the city council whether or not you think these goals basically fit a public purpose. I think there's certainly a very valid argument that they do, but that's really a matter of judgment for the city council to make. The second question that I think the council has to answer is whether or not you think an outside agency is the best way to have those functions performed, and if so, who that should be. So those are ultimately determinations that really have to be made by the council. What I'm hoping to get this evening, and I'm sure those at the table are as well, is trying to get some sense of where the council is in terms of the remaining funds that are in the FY07 budget. Just as the district required a grant agreement to be executed before funds could be released, that is a similar requirement under Maryland law. And from my perspective, that would be an agreement that should come back to the city council for your review and your comfort level before I would be comfortable signing anything. As often the case with contracts, my authority to sign those contracts, particularly when you're talking an amount of this magnitude, would require council approval for me to do that. Just, I guess, another general comment. If I were a city council member, I would probably want to see something a little bit more specific and detailed before I would release the full amount of the funds. That's a judgment call for the council to make. But I think if the council wishes to move forward, my personal suggestion would be that perhaps you do some partial release of funds, asking for a more detailed work plan to be developed and to brought back to the council for your review and consideration. That would probably conclude my comments. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions the council may have in terms of the requirements. Those are just my thoughts in terms of what I think is before you this evening.
I'd like to give the folks from Safe Tacoma an opportunity to speak to this issue also, unless the council has specific questions of the city manager. Okay.
I guess, as we have kind of like gone back and forth, we realize that we are kind of backing into this in terms of types of programs because usually if you have a grant, you develop the program, you cost it out, and then it is funded or it's not funded. Here we have money, and we are anticipating, hoping perhaps, to get money's released from Tacoma Park, or at least they promise before they release. And then we could put together a specific program package that has costed out. We have some ideas that we have bounced back and forth. And in terms of putting this together, and Seth talked about this the other night, we're putting together, have put together a stakeholders committee because we want community input into this process. There is supposed to be a meeting on May 30th, the first meeting, where we get together to figure out, you know, what's going on in the community, what they see are the issues, what types of programs they would like to see. We've also started doing some data gathering in terms of crime and order maintenance problems on both sides of the line. And also being, talking to some of the social service and other educational community organizations to see what types of programs are already out there, how effective they are. Because we don't need to reinvent the wheel, perhaps that we could partner, piggyback, or expand. So this is kind of like an information gathering session in preparation of finding out how much money we may or may not have, because that will drive the types of programs and how many we can have.
Okay.
Just one comment. I promised myself I wouldn't speak, but I guess that didn't go down there, is that we have to be, we have to be aware of DC's concerns. In other words, at this point, DC is, Commander Burton says that he's not releasing funds till he hears what Tacoma Park is going to be doing.
But we can't spend them because we have, we have the funds.
We have the funds.
But we can't spend them.
Right. So the point is that whatever you come up with needs to be such that we're not in this bind, that it releases, you know, gets us out of this bind of, you know, buddy pets. Just a comment.
Okay.
I wanted to add something that I think that, I think, I agree with city manager that some of the bulleted points and Seth's right up, we developed those initially before, you know, a year ago, before there was a talk of, before Chief Rakuchi was on board, before there was talk of a crime analyst, we saw those as roles to fill. I think now, looking at them myself, I think they're better police actions than ours. And I think we've been meeting, gosh, every other week or, you know, every third week for over a year now, and we've had a lot of discussions. I mean, we're more or less the core group here without Seth. And I wasn't in favor of this initially, but I think where I would like to see Safe Tacoma focus is more on the prevention end. And I think we can have a huge impact. I mean, I myself have been charged with looking into conflict resolution and how to train people who would be criminals or people who are criminals in this skill, and then teaching them, helping them teach one another. And that's been a very exciting conversation that I've had with the group out of Wheaton who does that training. And we also had a wonderful meeting a couple weeks back with Pieceaholics that Sarah arranged. And I was fascinated by the kind of work they do primarily in the district of intervention. And we asked them to work with us to provide some guidelines. So we've been doing a lot of grassroots things. We've just been doing them in conversation because we haven't had any money. I put together the 1023 package. I'm an accountant, but I'm not a lawyer. And I think it's in pretty good shape, but we're waiting for $100 to join Maryland nonprofits so that they will review it. And they will give us feedback so I can clean it up. And we're looking at about a six-month delay with internal revenue in order to get that funding. And initially, we didn't prepare the package for a couple of reasons, but one, when we thought we were getting funding from both governments, we didn't have to have, I thought, the 1023 application. It wasn't until we were well on our way to getting the money from the district that we knew, then they came back to us and told us we needed that. But we also need, the fee has gone up, we need $750 to send in with the application for IRS to consider it. But anyway, there are a lot of ideas that we have spent a lot of time discussing.
I think if, and if, you know, if others disagree with me, I think at this point, we would like to know that if the city council is so inclined to give us a grant, release the money, what do we need to do to move that forward? So, you know, bottom line, if you are inclined, what do we need to do?
Okay. That might be just exactly the right thing to then open it up to the council. I saw Joy's hand first and then Terry.
All right. A couple things, and I appreciate that Barb has now had a chance to look through the materials that you all have provided and that DC has agreed to. And she's given us very careful feedback on it. The goals that she includes in her cover sheet are ones that do seem, you know, right on in my view. I think that the, the community group has really spent a lot of time trying to, you know, get the, both jurisdictions to turn this into a grant. And this has been something that is, as you can see, something of a struggle. The city is not usually in the position of giving grants. We do contracts, do that all the time. This is new. And so it is taking a little bit longer to structure it so that there's a level of comfort from city government with it. I've been talking with Chief Rakuchi and city manager Matthews, and what I would like to see is whatever is necessary happen so that we can hire a program manager. And, you know, we have great expertise with the police chief and Commander Burton being so involved in this, but someone who I think we should draw on the expertise of is Mary Kendall, who supervises the operation in the Tacoma Langley Crossroads. And I believe she would be a good advisor for whatever program manager was hired for this project. I'm not wedded to it being done through a certain mechanism, nonprofit, grant, contract. I just want the program manager hired. That's what I've wanted for over a year. If the city manager could tell this council what she sees as being needed for, you know, what structure could be put in place to facilitate the hiring of a program manager, I'd really appreciate that. I think that we are all waiting with bated breath for kind of a mechanism, an answer. And certainly, DC has taken the plunge, and I appreciate that they have entrusted, you know, their money with this group in Tacoma DC. The Tacoma DC nonprofit entity is a little problematic because it has certain boundaries. So it may not be something that is easy for this city government to allocate money to. But I would really just like to know how we can get from here to hiring a program manager for this initiative.
Seems like a simple question, but it is probably really not. You know, obviously, one of the challenges, I think, is where the funds from both jurisdictions go. I mean, I think when we all kind of first started going down this path, this idea that we had a lot of back and forth in terms of, with statements that have been made in prior council meetings from the district representatives. I've not had this discussion personally with Commander Burton, but that there was concern expressed about DC giving funds to Tacoma Park, and there's been, I think, concerns from some council members about Tacoma Park giving funds to the district government. Obviously, that is somewhat a different issue than what we have with SeaSafe, where the city has essentially served as a fiscal agent and all the monies come to us. So each situation's different. So I think that whole funding question is one thing. You know, how do we either get the money in the same pot or how do you channel it? Because in concept, at least, both jurisdictions would be responsible for paying an equal share of any program manager's salary and benefits. I think a more basic question, though, is I think until we all figure out what the goals are that we're focusing on and trying to narrow that down, is there's different skills involved, whether you're doing prevention-related activities or you're doing community organizing. And I think it kind of becomes this rather vicious chicken and the egg cycle that I think we've all struggled to get out of. Until, I think, the focus is somewhat narrowed, from my perspective, it's rather difficult to hire a program manager, simply because you don't have the skill set that they need. I do want to just follow up on one thing Councilmember Austin Lane just mentioned, and just so everyone's clear. I think Mary Kendall, I think, has attended a number of the meetings in the past with, I guess, Captain Corsi and I at the time.
And actually, John Brill before her.
Yeah. And I think Ms. Kendall is an excellent resource. I would say that Ms. Kendall is a grant-funded position. Her salary and benefits are being paid with state funds. She's being paid with county funds. And basically, she is accountable to the Oversight Committee for SeaSafe, which consists of both Prince George's County, Montgomery County, the City of Tacoma Park, and certain state representatives. And that Oversight Committee is essentially her boss. And so I guess I just don't want to create any false expectation that Ms. Kendall can basically devote a significant amount of time. I think she has tried to do that, but she has an obligation to her Oversight Committee and to those grantors to make sure that their efforts are largely focused on what those grants have been given for. So I'm not sure, Councilmember Austin Lane, that's a tremendous amount of help. In fact, I think it probably just further complicates the matter, but I'm trying to be as honest as I can be, that I think, just as we hire anybody in the city, the skill sets are basically matched to what you're having them do. And I think there are some wonderful ideas, but those are different skill sets from my perspective, potentially. So I think that's something that would probably need to be talked about a little bit. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I think back a year ago or so, a little longer than that, that we, this council struggled with this question, at least I struggled with it. I found it to be particularly difficult to think about granting money to a neighborhood or a community group to address the policing concerns that we had at that point in time. But I'll say that although things have changed significantly since that time, we have a new police chief, you know, we have many things different. I try to be a man of my word. And as I recall, a year ago, I voted that we should be giving this money, this grant to the community group. And I can't in any way see why I would say, gee, I was just kidding. I mean, I think what we need to do is to let people know that they can trust our decisions and then talk about, you know, what has changed since that period of time and how should that money be used and what kind of programs are more appropriate than the bullet points that were in Seth Grimes' paper from that point in time a year ago. I certainly, you know, expect our police chief to do the policing work, to do the crime statistics and those types of things, aside the fact he's probably the only one, his department's the only one that can provide that information. He's also responsible to do that. So I don't want, don't want the community members doing work that the police department's responsible for. But there are a whole lot of things that can help the crime problems in any neighborhood beyond just policing. And so I think at this point, what remains, the decision has been made that the $75,000 goes to Safe Tacoma. The thing that remains is how do we provide the controls that are necessary and how do we identify and agree to exactly how that money is to be expended to the greatest benefit of the residents of Tacoma Park, Maryland? And so I would say that I would like to see the, that Chief Rakuchi work with Safe Tacoma to come up with that plan.
I'm willing to advise him.
Yes, we're delighted.
And that I'm willing to give him a little bit more authority than just an advisor. I think that, you know, he needs to be able to come to this council and advise us that he's in full support of the plan. And then I think the plan also needs to, there are things that are going to make me feel more comfortable. And I would say light on administrative costs and heavy on program funding. I want to see programs, some of which Patty talked about earlier, but things that are going to work to try to prevent crime and to help people, dissuade people from committing crimes. And that's an area that I would like to see our police department maybe do a little bit more in cooperation with our recreation department, but right now, that's not happening to the degree that I would like to see it. And that's where I see the great benefit from a program like Safe Tacoma, is working in that area, trying to keep people from committing crimes. So that's kind of my opinion on the thing, is yes, we release the money, but gradually as we get the plan in place and we agree to it. But there's no doubt about whether or not the money, that the grant stays in place.
I tend to agree with Terry's comments. I think that we made a commitment and we need to follow through on it. I think the, among the bullet points listed here that I think are the, some of the crucial ones that can take place here are promoting safe and aware communities and improving and expanding relationships within and among civic organizations. And I think that one of the, one of the reasons that we need to follow through on this and do this in this particular instance, even though there are other areas in the city that could reach to always say, well, we need this same kind of effort, is just the kind of thing that the chief referred to earlier in the budget discussion where they're tracking the gang folks back to the metro, going back into the district. I think that the big difference here is the metro. And that requires extra effort, and it's something over and above that we would be doing in other areas of the city. And we just have to come up with the right mechanism. And we just have to come up with the right mechanism and have an agreement that has the responsibility and the control and the feedback to us to make sure that there's oversight and things are expended properly. And I believe that the city manager could come up with an agreement that would do that and that we just have to figure out the details of exactly who the money goes to and in what order for what things, but that all needs to go forward.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. As the new council member, and I confess not being really very familiar with all the history of this effort, I wonder if someone could just spend a few minutes doing a little compare and contrast between SeaSafe and the Crossroads, its purposes, its organization, its functioning with what you have in mind? I wonder if you could just take a few minutes to kind of get sort of the, because I'm a little confused as to why there are, I mean, when there are similarities and then when there are differences, I don't really quite understand why there are similarities and differences. So if you could spend just a little time comparing Safe Tacoma with the Crossroads program, the SeaSafe.
I can take a stab at it. I'm not, I think, probably Joy is the one who's most familiar with SeaSafe. My understanding is that it is, as it does, I believe, report to, am I correct in saying it reports to police departments? Is that correct?
I can actually, I can address the SeaSafe component of it.
Okay, thank you.
The initial, the formation of SeaSafe basically came out of the State Hot Spots Program. We were the first cross-jurisdictional kind of hotspot in the state. We may be the only, we still are the only one. And Corsi may be able to share some of the history, but the, since its inception, I believe, the chief of the Tacoma Park Police Department has always chaired the Oversight Committee. I also serve as a member of that body. There has been some discussion about whether the chair should rotate, but up until now, at least, it's always been the chief in Tacoma Park. The Oversight Committee has representatives of both Prince George's County, the city, Montgomery County, I think there are also maybe some, I don't know if they're actual members of the Oversight Committee, but there are some state agencies, I believe, that also have parole and probation. Basically, the Oversight Committee needs, it basically helps define the budget, day-to-day supervision of Mary Kendall, who is the program director, basically is provided by Chief Rukucci now. There are two organizers for each county. Montgomery County has one, which is actually a staff person. The Prince George's position, there's been some changes over the years. Right now, it is vacant. They had asked that that position basically be brought in-house into their police department, though that position is not currently filled at this time. Both Ms. Kendall and Ms. Hilberger are technically contractual employees of the city. We are the ones who basically, technically, they're contractual employees because they are not receiving benefits other than those that are determined by the Oversight Committee to be appropriate. Does that help councilmembers sniffer?
The only thing I'd add is...
On that side, it does.
Yeah.
And then, so why, what's the difference with...
Well, if I can, just one other thing, I think I'm going to have them address in terms of Safe Tacoma Incorporated, but it is a, it kind of receives funding from a variety of sources in terms of SeaSafe that's outlined in the special revenue fund section of your budget document. But essentially, the city serves as a fiscal agent, so all the grant funds from the other agencies come to the city. We do all the record-keeping, we file all the paperwork with the state, and technically, we are the actual grant recipient of those funds. Because SeaSafe does not really exist as a nonprofit entity. It's really just a body that's defined by memorandum of understanding between the parties.
The things that I would say are different are that you have all of SeaSafe, even though it's happening across numerous jurisdictions, they're all in Maryland. So that makes it easier for those agencies to give the money to the city and the city is the fiscal agent because, you know, we're the smallest government with kind of the most local perspective on what's going on in the crossroads. The other thing that's different is that with SeaSafe, the community organizing is a priority. Things are more loosely organized over there, whereas here in, around the metro, you have very well-organized neighborhood associations already, as well as business entities, schools, churches, you know, ANC's. We really do have that part. And I think the thing that is being requested is a coordinator who will make sure all those entities stay in the loop. And then, one thing that I want to make sure doesn't get lost is what the Joint Task Force report indicates, which is that, you know, this, this area around the metro needs a focused effort, just like SeaSafe is doing, where you have probation, parole, you know, social agency, social services agencies, juvenile justice, the prosecutors, you have them collaborating with police departments. And that is something that does go beyond our police domain and, you know, can use that coordinating facility. So I want to make sure that is kind of front and center on all of the activities that we talk about for Safe Tacoma, because I think that is one of the very important parts.
As Joy mentioned, I'd want to add to it, the genesis of Safe Tacoma was that Joint Task Force, which you're probably not familiar with. This was two years, three years before?
2002.
2000, oh my God. Yes, five years ago. And at the time, Mr. Fenty was the councilperson of this area, Chief Lanier was commander of the fourth district. So we had some heavy hitters from the DC side, and they came up with a five-part, I believe it was a five-part report. And because it was ident, the metro was identified as a nexus that needed to be treated. And they came up with a report that took five different aspects of what needs to be done in the metro area.
I don't mean to interrupt, Andy, but I wish they had come up with a report.
Well, it's...
It took us forever to actually, you know, pull those pieces together. And it was an enormous community effort that went into the eight-week-long task force and all of the committees that were busy in between times and then afterwards. But that report is a good guide for us doing what is recommended in there, which is this cross-border collaboration.
So if it's not a sexist remark, one could say that this is the child of that effort.
Yep.
And I think what Councilmember Austin Lane indicated, this coordination is particularly important and the key to the success of this Safe Tacoma program. And also, I think, there's a particular emphasis on prevention, on crime prevention measures. I'll say very quickly that this is, while we have a very strong model to refer to, as a resource to refer to, as one of the important resources to refer to, the SeaSafe program, this is nonetheless a rather pioneering effort in that it is cross-jurisdictional and it is very much a coordinated effort and very much, very much focused on crime prevention. Initially, when we sort of started getting the ball rolling over a year ago, of course, as Sergeant mentioned, we were all aware of, Chief Rukucci was not here. And so there were particular interests in perhaps supporting, in giving a little more support to the crime statistics through Safe Tacoma. But that now is Chief Rukucci and Commander Burton, I understand, are in practically weekly contacts or more often, I understand.
Do they involve the rest?
Well, much more than. And that's been wonderful. And Commander Burton is very much on board, unless he's also part of the advisory council, as is Sergeant Holloway from the Metro Transit Police. And we do expect to be able to coordinate programs and be aware of various programs of various interests around the metro. I think that's one of the sticky wickets for other programs going perhaps in different areas, that it's coordination, that you use resources well and coordinate them well so we aren't, you know, reinventing a ruedo or overlapping unnecessarily, but rather coordinating well. And so that's, I think, what we can, our value added, one of our values added here.
Let me just, is that, does that answer your question? Do you have anything else? Okay. Yes, I did. That's something I wanted to say. I remember last year when we were doing this budget discussion. It followed a time when there had been a great deal of crime in this part of Tacoma Park that was immediately adjacent to the District of Columbia. And that sort of concern is sort of, is what motivated the council's interest in committing the funding to an effort like this. At the same time, when we made the commitment, the commitment was to a program, it was to an effort. It wasn't to a group of people or to an organization. And I retain that commitment to that program, to that effort, rather than to a group of people. And so I don't think you can say that we promised this Safe Tacoma group, we promised to fund a program. And I would still honor that promise to the program, but that's why, for me, the agreement and the program and the activities to be undertaken are really primary. It's not that the city has promised to fund this organization, but that the city has promised to fund an effort. And the question in my mind is, does this, is this organization going to put forward an effort like what we intended to fund? And so that's sort of the question in my mind. I think that the suggestions that the city manager makes are very good suggestions. And I would like to see us come up with an agreement which clearly specifies the kinds of things that would be done. I think there's a little bit of a complexity, though, that comes into this at this point. The organization that you all represent doesn't actually have an incorporated existence yet.
Yes, it does.
It does.
Since November.
And, yes, we are incorporated.
But you're not a 501(c)(3), yes?
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's, but as far as the city's concerned, in terms of giving money, that's sort of the other critical piece for us.
We're a nonprofit, we're not tax-exempt.
Right. I appreciate that. And so that's going to be a little bit of a problem. And I'm not quite sure how we deal with that in the near term. And my inclination is to throw that back to the city manager and ask her if she can give us, not on the spot, but at some point, some advice on that. But the other thing is that I would, I would really look for, I think, when you're putting together a program, there's sort of two ways you can do it. You can start from the global perspective or you can sort of start from sort of on-the-ground perspective. And I appreciate sort of the work that you've done, looking sort of overall at a global perspective. But I think the other thing that I would want to see is some sort of short-term, immediate activities that would be things that we could look at and say, okay, you know, this is the kind of thing that we were thinking of, this certainly, and you've got some of those in here. I know you've got, it's in here, but I do remember there's some specific things. And I think we can come up with an agreement similar to the one that you've got with the district. I also think that the type of partial funding, I understand that you guys are sort of stuck in a chicken and an egg situation.
That's right.
You know, you couldn't get money from us...
All of us are.
Until, until the district. And now, you know, the district has certain requirements that you sort of need now something from us. So, and I don't want you to be sort of stuck in that perspective forever. So I'm willing to make a commitment for some funding, and we can sort of talk about what that is, as sort of a, the way the district's doing, they're giving you 60% funding and then the rest contingent on some other things. And that makes sense to me. Because as I said, the commitment that I think this council made was to activities, was to doing things that would make that area around both of our borders more safe and particularly around the metro. I think you've picked the right focal point in terms of the Tacoma metro. But I, I still feel a bit uncomfortable because I'm sort of not to that level of specificity that I would like for us to say, for me to go to the other residents who, in many cases, also feel that they have anti-crime concerns and say, we've spent this money on X. I can't say, well, we've given this money to Safe Tacoma. They're going to say, so what, Safe Tacoma? But if we say, we've spent the money on this activity, then I think we can say, and it's likely to achieve these good results. So that's where I'm coming from, not giving money to an organization, but giving money for specific activities.
Can I ask about the nonprofit status, what the, what the status of your filing is at this point?
We incorporate it as a nonprofit entity in the state of Maryland.
Your tax-exempt status is what I was...
But we don't, we, what we have is a, we have not filed the application with the federal government to be recognized as a tax-exempt organization. And what's...
Because you would get, you could possibly get an interim, I think it's common practice for the federal government, for the IRS, to issue a...
They make a five-year advance ruling generally, and then, you know, in five years, you come back to them and, you know, if everything is as you intended it to be, then you become, you know, permanently, you know, recognized. Right? They make an advance ruling. I've prepared all the paperwork. There's been reticence, at least on my part, to, well, reticence and lack of $850 that I wanted to invest to get that, to get that completely, you know, filed and whatnot. I'm ready to go ahead.
Chicken and egg problem.
I'd like to go ahead with it because, I mean, we had to be somewhat specific, too, in the various write-ups that are required to prepare that document. And I have, I have what I've prepared. I would prefer for Maryland nonprofits to vet it based on their experience. I actually used their materials in preparing it, but, as a guideline. But once they vet it and clean it up a little, I'd be happy to share it with, I don't think the group would, I mean, it's not a private document. I'd be happy to share it, it's just I think they could improve it from what I've done with it so far.
Okay, so anyways, that process is...
It's on hold a little bit because we haven't had the money. I can, I've been, I'm willing to put the $100 in myself to get Maryland nonprofits to look it over. That's a service that I'm not, you know, that we need $750 to actually file it with the federal government.
I would support our funding that, including the Maryland nonprofits piece. I know Maryland nonprofits, and they are an excellent organization, and I know that one of the main things they do is training for small nonprofits and things like administration and organization and fundraising and using your board and things like that.
Yeah, they have a lot of things they can offer us.
I just want to share with the council that obviously we had reimbursed some expenses. I will say that when I contacted the city attorney's office, because this is something that's new to all of us, they were actually somewhat uncomfortable with my even doing a reimbursement in the absence of an agreement. I think because it was a reimbursement when we started crossing over into talking about advancing funds, because that had been a request of the organization previously. I got kind of a very uncertain feeling from the city attorney's office in the absence of any kind of agreement, which is obviously the same problem unfortunately you had with the district. So I did want to share that with the council. I think...
Could we, could we have an agreement prior to having the plan complete? In other words, something that is about the startup funding and then with the second phase being the development of the plan, which is, would bring on the commitment for...
Well, I have a couple of proposals if I could have the floor.
Why don't you, why don't you go ahead and make them?
Thank you. The entity that has been set up, in my view, is probably the thing that allows DC and Tacoma Park to give, you know, to pool their resources and then have this program person hired. So I think that all of this has been going in a direction that could help us get to where we need to go. I'd like to see the city manager...
I'd like to see the city manager determine what it is about that entity that is necessary to satisfy, you know, this city's requirements, and then sign an agreement whereby that structure is in place and the money can then be released. Now, if the Tacoma DC is not the entity, there, you know, there's also the Business Association, I know that they passed on this when we approached them before, but then Roz Grigsby, their program manager, has been involved in the Safe Tacoma initiative. So, it may be that it's time to go back to that and either release the money to the Tacoma DC Neighborhood Association, or the entity that the city manager feels is best. And then the oversight of it, I think that's, you know, in the DC agreement, there is a difference, you know, our oversight would be done by the city manager, so Commander Burton and the city manager would be the two people overseeing the funding, and I would think that they would probably get advice from Ann on the DC side, and Chief Rucucci on the Tacoma Park side with the decisions that were made. If we could get that structure in place, whether it be having those people as officials in the Safe Tacoma organization, I'd really like to see that happen. I think signing that agreement over the next month or so, and getting the funding squared away, whatever entity is appropriate to receive that, and then putting out either a request for proposals and hiring the program manager on a contract basis with the programming that is proposed and decided on, or hiring the program manager and then carrying out what in the task force crime report, we know some of the things that need to happen, they include some of the things that happened during the eight weeks of the task force. So, I feel that this has been talked about over and over, and if we keep coming back and talking about it but never taking the plunge, then we're all going to be very frustrated. This chicken and egg problem is not something that just this group is experiencing, I believe this council is also experiencing it. And what, what it says to me is that this new exploration of the city council as grant maker is not a great direction for us to go in, because this is what results, you know, we're uncertain about how to proceed, but if the city manager would like to proceed with this in terms of a contract-
I would object to that, I would object to that, as I said, I want to see an action, I don't want to fund an organization first and then later find out what they're going to do.
I want to find a program manager, that's what I've wanted this money for ever since.
I want to find a program first.
Well, Mary Kendall has one going in the crossroads, and that's what this was based on, and that's what Chief Kramer came to us and said, you know, this would probably be the right place for it. So, I really base it on her and my experience on the, on the joint crime task force, and her proposal for what kind of funding might be needed for this. So, you know, I can point to everything that got us here, what I can't do is help the city take the leap over, you know, structures that right now are not designed for it. This organization has designed a structure for it, and I think if the leadership needs to be changed so that the city officials are in the oversight position in this Safe Tacoma initiative, and the residents and other stakeholders are in the advisory capacity in the Safe Tacoma initiative, that's where we should go.
How is this different than the organizations that we fund through the CCBG funding?
Well, that's a very specific program in terms of which the city is the recipient of funds, it's subject to very strict program requirements, there are only certain areas in the city because of income requirements that even qualify, I mean, there's a whole structure of-
I understand the rules on what we can do, but it's still organizations that we want to do.
Terry, those programs are very specific, for example, they say they're going to buy this many computers, or they're going to provide services to this many low-income kids, or this is specifically what they're going to do. And actually, I'd love to see something like that for this group. I guess what I would propose to the council is that the city manager negotiate an agreement with this group for some specific activities and a specific program, rather than saying, you're going to hire a manager, and then we're going to put out an RFP and ask, what do people suggest that you do? I'm going to, I'm going to say that, I would suggest to the council that we, that we ask the city manager to negotiate an agreement with whatever entity is the best entity to do it. If this group can get their 501(c)(3) pulled together quickly enough, they probably would be the best entity to do it. But for a specific program, a specific series of activities which would have certain kinds of accomplishments, and then once we've got that agreed on, then, you know, we can release the funding as those things are accomplished. That's what I would recommend.
We don't want to cause heartburn, and I tense-
Oh, it's too late.
Yeah, I know. One of the things that we had discussed, and it comes down to whether the money is promised, the money's in hand, is that we realize that there are fiscal year obligations and things, something like that, and if money could remain, and it takes perhaps Safe Tacoma six months to figure out exactly what program can be developed, and with what measurements, as long as we know that the money is there, that we can, you know, develop this program structure, develop the budget, as long as we know that the money does not disappear in August, then I think that's something that we could, we could agree on, and these administrate, except for maybe some administrative costs, these administrative things to put the program in place, we've discussed kind of taking that on as the organization, as opposed to spending funds to do all that and have administrative costs heavier than program costs.
So, essentially, what you're asking for is an earmark of $75,000 in the budget, and then an agreement-
It doesn't disappear.
Yes, I would, I would be willing to make that commitment, and then it would be expended on the basis of an agreement that certain things would happen on a certain schedule, and the funds would be paid following that schedule as certain things happen.
That you all approve.
Yeah.
You know, if we come up with a program you don't like it.
Yeah, no, that sounds like a reasonable way to go to me.
I think that needs to be, I can't see the timeline as how this would develop, and what I'm concerned with is, would that suffice for Commander Burton?
Can we ask the city manager what timeline this agreement might-
Well, for the 501(c)(3), is it, what, six months?
We think so, it's possible to ask for an expeditious ruling, but, you know, you have to have some pretty darn strong reasons to get above everybody else asking for an expeditious ruling.
Does the city pay tax?
Right, and so, if this, if this money was given to this entity, which is a nonprofit
that isn't tax exempt yet, what would be the result?
I don't think we're allowed to-
I'm asking the city manager.
I, my guess would be that we are not allowed to do that, I'm basically, I'm not an accountant, actually, Ms. Daisy, you have something up on me on this?
I know, I'm afraid, I don't, I do not know.
Yeah, I believe that because of the situation with the district, my presumption is, there's fairly similar things, though we're obviously in different jurisdictions and subject to different laws, but the fact that they elected to grant it to the neighborhood association because they did have, you know, a tax exempt status leads me to believe we might fall under the same thing. I think what Dale is saying is that basically you just want the funding carried over from one fiscal year to another, so that it doesn't-
An earmark in the budget was what I'm hearing.
And earmark, and I don't think DC, you know, we could, we could talk to Commander Burton, as long as we don't touch the money, I don't, I don't think there would be a problem with us coming up with the programs, with the process, presenting it, and if it meets both sides, because they want to see something, too. If it meets the approval of both sides, then we can begin spending the money. As I said, we might need a little bit for administrative startup, and however we get that, you know, through an agreement, through a cooperative agreement, MOU, that's fine, but if we know that the money's there and it's not going to disappear, then we can put together a program, we can budget it out, present it to both sides, and see if it works.
My suggestion would be that if the council wishes to carry over the funds, you just merely provide that direction this evening, I think is, we're not going to solve all the, you know, answer all the questions here this evening, I think we all know that, we're trying to work with another governmental jurisdiction, there's timing issues, there's programmatic issues, I think when we, and I've said this to many of you at the table in the meetings I've sat in, I think when we kind of went down this path, it was, talking about Sea Safe, it was to talk about a model of cross-jurisdictional cooperation, as I have said to many of you, I think we need to recognize these areas are very, very different. As Councilmember Austin Lane indicated, you have an area that basically has almost no sense of organization compared to, the section that we're talking about is the most heavily organized portion of Tacoma Park, and talking to Commander Burton, he would say similar things about this aspect area of his service territory. We are talking about gang activity, very prevalent, as the chief alluded to, in the, along the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, in Langley Park, so I think we all just need to keep in mind that you're talking about a model of cross-jurisdictional cooperation, but it's not a one-size-fits-all, and certainly I think a lot of the challenges, unfortunately, that they are all dealing with up in the crossroads are vastly different than the issues. And in answer to Councilmember Snipper's question, and there's been some discussion about probation and parole, the difference in the Sea Safe area is that you actually have people who are on probation, who are on parole, who were unfortunately incarcerated, who are actually living in that specific area, that does not appear to be the case in the area we're talking about based on, I guess, my knowledge from our police department and what Commander Burton has shared. In the case of Sea Safe, they are actually tracking those former offenders, they are trying to provide job skills training, you have a defined pool of people that when you're talking about probation and parole activities that you're actually focusing on, that will not be the case. So, I do think some of those issues are, need to be acknowledged, and that's going to take a little bit more thought in terms of how exactly you deal with an issue when the residents are being impacted from many factors outside that area, rather than people who live within those borders.
But I will also say that you woo my support if you do include areas that do include, you know, are the residences of the probation parolees that may operate in your area, and I would suggest that you look at the statistics for locations for parolees and probationees, and see if they aren't close enough to your, the area that you are, that you have mapped out for your project, and that you might want to include those residences within your area, so you can do a similar type of program.
I have a map already of probation and parolees on the DC side within the area.
Yeah, I thought there were a couple of homes on the DC side.
There are more than a couple. There are more than a couple.
I strongly encourage you to look at the Maryland side.
Yeah, so I have to go from Maryland side.
So, would the council agree then to hold this money in the FYOE budget earmarked for whatever it's called now, cross-jurisdictional policing activities around the Tacoma metro, or whatever it's called now?
Don't worry about it, as long as you tell me that's what it's for, I don't remember the reaction.
And it would continue to be earmarked and set aside for that purpose, and that the city manager would meet with the Safe Tacoma group and work out some kind of an agreement, which would then come back to the council.
If I may ask, and just so I'm clear, I think Mr. Grimes had indicated that Ms. Fisher-Stewart was sort of the programmatic point person, obviously, as we're trying to work through this, there's a lot of complicated issues, and with all due respect, it's easier if I, if the chief and I have a point of contact, and Gail, is that you?
Gail is the point.
Okay, just wanted to get that, make sure I was clear on that.
But she needs $850.
Actually, can I say on that, on the $850, it seems to me that because we don't yet have this agreement in place, and that will take time, the money that Commander Burton is overseeing, you know, given that we've already reimbursed some, I would think that the $850 could come from that.
What I can simply do is basically, either the chief or I can contact Commander Burton, advise him of what the council's discussion was this evening, he obviously was a party to going through the rather torturous execution of an agreement within his own border, let him know the situation that we're in, that there is an absence of an agreement, and basically let him know we reimbursed some expenses, and we would ask him for his concurrence to release the funds needed for you to proceed with your 501(c)(3) filing. That's ultimately up to him, of course, but we can certainly formally make that request on behalf of the city council.
Yeah, I, I think it would benefit us all if somehow or other some of these issues weren't put on a serial track, that they'd be parallel tracks, so that, you know, we're not-
No, I, yes, I agree with what you're saying, in other words, you can go, as soon as you get the money, go ahead and proceed with your 501(c)(3), and at the same time, the agreement is being worked out.
And then the next thing that comes up, that's going to need $2.98.
Not wait till six months to begin the discussions, yeah.
Mayor, if I may, I, I think, Mr. Keys, did you have something, you've had your hand sort of half up, and you look like you wanted to say something.
Could you come up here to the table so we can get your comments on record, just for cameras?
My first.
Yes, cameras, too.
I'm just hoping that we can move the process a little bit further along, I mean, this has been two years now that we've been working with the council to try to get this, and I'm not trying to lay blame or anything, it's just been torturous. I'm hoping that we can take some concrete steps to move the process forward, and two that I would suggest is to come up with some sort of a letter of intent or memorandum of understanding that we are entering into a relationship, and that there is this money that the city intends to spend on this, on this program, whether it goes directly to us or not. I think that would go a long way towards assuaging the concerns on the district's side as well, if we have a letter of intent.
I assume that the city manager could do that based on what the council is saying.
That's what I was just alerting to.
And then, and then above and beyond that, some amount of startup costs, whether it's the $850 or $1,000 or whatever, that would be dedicated towards startup costs in terms of establishing the nonprofit status, arranging the initial meetings of the steering committee, and taking steps towards hiring a program manager, so some money to help defraze some startup costs, and kind of as a gesture of goodwill to get the ball rolling. And then, and then going forward from there, I think we can negotiate piecemeal to release the remaining funds as approved by the city for specific purposes.
I don't, does the city manager have a thought on that?
Well, as I already indicated, when I even went to reimburse cost in the absence of agreement, the reaction I got from the city attorney's office was somewhat, you know, it was somewhat troubled because there is no agreement, and that is a legal standard in Maryland, because it was a reimbursement, and I basically had to write a letter to the file for the finance department, because if it's audited, that's, that's an issue.
Well, that's what I'm asking for, is a legal agreement.
Yeah, when I ask about other funds, I'm not, I'd have to talk to the attorneys, I'm not one, all I can share with the council is my past conversation, because there had been a request previously to advance some funds, and that was something that they found troubling in the absence of an agreement, what that agreement would need to look like to give them a comfort level, I don't know. I can certainly talk to them.
I'd like to see us move forward as expeditiously as possible with the type of agreement that DC has. I think that, you know, if it's just a matter of finding the right entity to deposit the money with between now and when the Safe Tacoma initiative has nonprofit status, that seems similar to what they did on the DC side.
Yeah, there's two issues, I see you enter into an agreement with, and there's the council providing some guidance in terms of what are the specific goals, because that's the public purpose, if you are legally required, as is council to define. Councilmember Williams shared some of his thoughts, if there's other thoughts, that would be helpful, but that has to be part of the agreement, and ultimately, this agreement needs to come back to you for you to basically review and to give me the authority to sign it. So, if there is any thoughts the council has, I don't know that you need to do it this evening, but if you have any thoughts, those would need to be incorporated, and ultimately, you have the right from the DIES, obviously, to change those, but whatever input I can get at this juncture would be helpful.
Well, I agree with your comment.
In the next few weeks, a lot of the staff's focus is going to be getting the budget finalized, so I just don't want to create any false expectations, you know, we'll certainly try to keep it moving forward, chief or I will be in touch with Commander Burton within the next few days, but obviously, our primary focus is getting the overall budget for the city to the council within probably two weeks.
And perhaps when whoever speaks to Commander Burton advises him that there is a letter of intent, and the money has been earmarked, that perhaps he would be willing to free up the money for the administrative costs.
My intention was just to send a letter, which would probably be probably more appropriate coming from me, since I'm directly employed by the council, is to send a letter basically summarizing this evening's discussion, let him know that the, because we do not have an agreement, and that the city has- and that the city has already kind of gone out on a limb reimbursing some costs, we would appreciate his consideration of basically paying for the filing fee. I will be out of the office tomorrow, so basically that letter would probably not go out until Monday or Tuesday next week.
Would it be appropriate for us to initiate a memorandum of understanding between Safe Tacoma and the council for the interim?
I would suggest before any effort, go into that direction that I talk to the city attorney's office. I don't want to spend any more time if that's not something that would be satisfactory or acceptable to them from a legal standpoint. We probably should get that determination from the city attorney's office before any work goes into an MOU.
Yeah, but I think what we can clearly do this evening is we can say that the money will remain in the budget earmarked for this purpose. And, you know, it would be contingent on an agreement and, you know, fulfilling that agreement.
And if we could, as quickly as possible, I understand you're very busy right now, but get, find out what the requirements are for entering a legal agreement with the city. Because, you know, like this thing about 501(c)(3) status, this is the first time we've heard about it, you know, two years of negotiating this. A similar thing happened with the district. They were about to sign the check and then they turned around and said, oh, by the way, do you have 501(c)(3) status? So then we had to scramble and find another entity. So we just need to know what are the requirements so that we can line everything up and if we can find another organization like the business association or whatever to work with, we'll do that, but we just need to know what's required.
Does it need to be a Maryland nonprofit?
I don't know the answer to that. Once again, I'm not aware of the city.
I'm not expecting the answer now. I'm just saying as soon as...
Yeah, I was trying to respond to Councilmember Austin's question.
It's difficult for you guys, I know, because you're new, but 501(c)(3) status is pretty much required for any foundation or government to give funding. And so probably the district assumed that everybody knows that and that's why they didn't say anything to you until late.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that it's not a problem if it is a DC nonprofit versus does it need to be a Maryland nonprofit? So not just the nonprofit status, but the jurisdiction in which that nonprofit status exists. If we could just get those questions, I'm happy to work with the city manager, my council colleagues, the Safe Tacoma organization, and further develop the goals and the specific tasks that we would see staffing and programming needed for. And I appreciate the council's support for this staying in the budget.
Well, and I want to say that I know you guys have spent a lot of time working on this and I appreciate the work that you've done. Starting an organization from scratch, as you've found out, is not an easy thing to do and the difficulties you've had are not unique. I've been peripherally involved in some small nonprofit startups and actually, it could be a lot worse.
And I was just relating to Councilmember Siemens, my experience with Silver Spring Tacoma Thunderbolts and starting that up and soliciting donations to get money to do things like file the 501(c)(3). And I ended up making a loan to the organization to file the 501(c)(3) so that we could get the donations in order to have the money to file a 501(c)(3).
Are you accepting application?
And we actually, I think we actually would be willing to do something similar if we had some assurance that we would be... I mean, that's how we funded it so far, is by lending money to the organization. So we're open to that sort of thing as well. We just, you know, it's a lot of money to come out of somebody's pocket if we don't know it's going to come back.
So thank you all very much and hope we can keep this moving.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have one remaining item on our agenda this evening. The city manager has asked that if there's going to be, if any members of the council have other items that they want to put on the budget reconciliation list, that you do it this evening. The staff wants to have the time that it needs to look into, you know, to do any research it has to do on any of those requests so that the council can consider those proposals with the information that it needs. Are there any additional items for the reconciliation list? Does Safe Tacoma count?
That would be considered a carryover item.
Okay. Terry?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. There are two items in the past that the council has funded, two projects the council has funded that I would like to consider including in our budget and not just funding those through the CCBG money. And that is the Manna Food Project and the Job Readiness Training, which is actually being administered by the Mary Kendall SeaSafe Project.
If I may, and I didn't mention this, I think when we talked about the non-departmental budget, in the grand scheme of things, it's such a small amount. We did include $5,000 in my proposed budget, which is the amount that was in this year's budget for job readiness training. We went ahead and continued that funding. Whether that amount is sufficient...
I'm not sure that's ever...
Yeah, so I mean, but I'm just wanting to let you know that there is some funding...
I appreciate that's in there and then that would just leave the money for the Manna Food Project.
The, in addition to discussing reconciliation in our next budget work session, we're going to begin with a discussion of whether the council wants to initiate a program of contributions to nonprofits. And that would include things like Manna, as well as Historic Tacoma, all the other things that we have sort of done on an ad hoc basis up to this point. And I think that that would be, you know, that would be the appropriate venue for something like that.
May I ask, Councilmember Siemens, is there a specific amount for Manna Food that she wanted me to put on the reconciliation list?
I would put $10,000.
Is there anything else?
I'd like to just mention it's not on the reconciliation list because of its miniscule size, but we have in the past put a contribution of $900 into the pedestrian safety media campaign that the council of governments operates. This coming year, they're proposing to do it twice a year instead of once, and so I would just like, I don't think it has to go in reconciliation because I'm asking for an increase from 900 to 1,000, and that's well under the action limit for anything like that. But I would like that council's agreement to increase our contribution to $1,000 in light of the, as a way of encouraging the council of governments to do this on a twice-a-year rather than a once-a-year basis. Is there any objection? I'm only seeing guesses, so...
I guess in addition to any proposed additions, it would be helpful for the staff because we obviously not only, we don't assume that everything that went into my proposed budget that the council is necessarily in concurrence with. If there's any items that the council wishes to delete from the budget, this would be the appropriate time to perhaps mention those items as well so you have a complete reconciliation list, both additions and deletions, as we're talking about this Monday evening.
City Manager Matthews, could you, just as an illustrative exercise, tell us what you would propose to reduce to match this 112? This is more just for a, I'm not suggesting that we would do it, I just want to know how you would do it if that were necessary.
Well, I guess I would make the comment first that the items that are on this list were either, are not necessarily recommendations from my standpoint. The first two items are items that the council specifically requested during the earlier budget work sessions. Those are obviously very nominal amounts of money. The local supplement to the state tax credit is something we had talked about, which under the current council policy, and I think the mayor had noticed this, unless there's a change in the council's policy regarding the supplement, there's an ordinance on the books and basically the staff direction, if you will, would be to essentially need this funding, otherwise for not being compliant with the council policy that's currently in effect. The last item, and I attached the letter, I think I had mentioned this, this was a request that had been emailed to me on May 10 from Casa of Maryland. It is essentially their request, but I think I do owe them the courtesy of an answer, whether or not that's something the council wishes to support is kind of an open-ended question in my mind. I know that's not very helpful, but I think certainly if there's direction from the council that you're inclined to support this $112,000, that is certainly a significant amount of money and we can certainly bring some recommendations back.
I'm sorry, I wasn't clear. I was assuming that the council approved of $112,500 and I was asking, if the council asked you to cut somewhere else to match it, where would you cut? That's what I was asking for.
Yeah.
I'm not expecting you to answer right now.
Yeah, we can certainly get some thought to that. Is there anything else?
My assumption, and I appreciate the comments that you made on the circuit breaker increase, my assumption is that if the council did nothing, it would either have to be funded, the $50,000 would either have to be funded by program cuts or to come out of fund balance.
Or revenue generation on some other side.
Mm-hmm. Oh, revenue generation, right. But since it's actually not an expenditure, it's actually a decrease, well, it's an expenditure, but in effect, it's a decrease in revenues because it's a payback of some of what we received.
It actually is an outright expenditure. We are cutting checks on this amount.
Right. That's the physical form of it, but the way I think of it conceptually is that we're giving back some of the property tax revenue that we receive to people whose property taxes are high in relation to their incomes.
Correct.
But you're correct in that it does actually, it is physically checks. But I guess the question is, would that be excessive to come out of our fund balance?
I'd prefer to kind of review that, I think, in conjunction with the finance director. Anytime we start talking about fund balance, I can see her starting to get nervous.
And I would note that you have also said in the past that you're less, much less comfortable with ongoing expenses coming out of fund balance. This is definitely an ongoing expense.
Yeah, I think as we talked about during the non-departmental side of the budget, I mean, the reality is the way the city has, by practice, rather than requirement, elected to handle the 2% requirement from the charter, essentially we budget it as an expenditure, but I don't think there's ever been a time that I'm aware of, or in my tenure certainly and before that, where the city has ever extended that. So as we look at the fund balance numbers, you know, quite frankly, this is somewhat understated because of the way that is handled from a budgetary process.
Right.
I'll give some thought to that, Councilmember Snipper, and we'll have some suggestions for you, should you want to go in that direction.
Sure. The only thing that I am not sure is accounted for in this budget is any potential decision by the council on council compensation. So would that be something you'd recommend be handled at the mid-year review after the budget is already in place?
Yeah, we actually, the city clerk, Jesse Carpenter, I actually talked about this. We were putting together the budget because we knew it was time for the council compensation committee. Quite candidly, without the committee having done its work, anything that I would put in would have been so speculative and I thought that would be inappropriate, quite frankly, because it sort of prejudges what the committee was going to do. Any increase that the council voted would obviously not go into effect until the new terms of office, which are, you know, almost halfway through the year, and I think we could just deal with it at that time. I think that is part of the reason why you have an unappropriated reserve is to basically address those issues that couldn't be anticipated at the time the budget was developed. Anything else?
Well, it looks like there's nothing else of the things the council's mentioned, so we will come back then on Monday and continue our discussion of that and do both the discussion of the grants to nonprofits and the final reconciliation. There's nothing else, we're adjourned.